While you're firing up, I'll go ahead and start. I call the Wittenwood City School Board to order July the 22nd. Please stand with me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a good time, if you've got a cellphone, to pull it out and put the ringer on silent or turn it off so it doesn't interrupt you and embarrass you. We have some folks that came this evening that would like to address the board. Oh, roll call, Mr. Seymour, sorry.
Mrs. Emmert?
Here.
Mr. Pennekoff?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Mrs. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Cleary?
Here.
We have some comments from three stakeholders in the community. We'll start with Mr. Brandon Weers.
Thank you. I want to comment to the board and the public about this nice report that was presented at your last meeting. I wasn't present for the entirety of the meeting, but I saw it online, and I want to make some comments about it tonight. This is, I'm holding out the Wittenwood City Schools' six-month academic plan, which was delivered to the public in a public meeting that I attended last November. It was at the same meeting that, I believe it was John Ford presented a summary of his research results, dealing with a community survey about the acceptability of a new building plan. In any event, this subject came up for discussion. It's the benefit of, it had the benefit of a prior release of an academic report card from the state Department of Education. I want to just comment, a quick read of the summer, a quick summary of this analysis provided by Dr. Sokol at the last meeting reveals that there are 14 strategies and goals. Four of them were met. 10 of them were partially met, and four were not met at all at that time. I suggested at the time of the meeting and the presentation that there might have been a greater focus, and I want to reiterate that now. Good mentoring, I think, would have suggested there be more focus than 14 for a six-month period of time aimed at academic achievement improvement. What that does, if you in fact confuse tactics with goals, is proliferates the activities that are involved in getting to a point, end point. And that sets you up for failure and the person responsible. That's a little bit of what the background I have about strategic planning brings me as an interpreter of the outcomes. You can do better if you have more focus and if you distinguish between tactics and goals and strategies. Well, so I want now, though, to ask, is there a follow-up plan the public can see? Like this one, which in November reached its maturity in June of this year. Now, what's next, is the question that comes to mind. Is there ownership by the board to ensure, in fact, that there is a follow-up plan that can be made available to the public? I attended the preceding four years of report card presentations, and I heard disavowal of ownership by the board, as if there's some other way to explain what's occurring. And a variety of suggestions repeatedly were made, but the public, like me, I'm a longtime stakeholder. I expect better board ownership than that. I expect more engagement, and I expect more leadership. I look forward to seeing the follow-up report if there is a strategy that can be made available and known to the public for going beyond what was accomplished by this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weers. Any comments? Well, I'm going to take a stab at making a comment, not really wanting it to be dialogue, at least at this point. I think if you hit the website and you look at the other plans and strategies that we're working, that we're working simultaneously with the six-month plan, an example might be the Ohio Improvement Plan, OIP. You'll see that there's a plan and a strategy. You'll see what the measurables are and how we've worked that. That's just one of multiple plans that we were working. The data, you are correct, the data that Dr. Sokol presented last month, in some areas we met, some areas we didn't meet, some areas we were halfway. If you benchmark that against the scores that our administrators were able to get, it was a win-win-win-win-win across the board. Did we meet all the indicators? Did we meet every single item, all 14? We didn't. But if you look at the results that we were able to get in a short period of time, they're pretty good results. When does the final come out on that, Jim?
We will have-
Because we just have the preliminary right now, so.
We've got preliminary, I'd say maybe in a week and a half or two weeks. Now, a value add is the one that we have to wait on, and that's a really important measure for the school to evaluate. Very important measure. What we're really looking at right now is performance index and value add. Performance index is looking pretty good at this point. Value add, we don't know, but we'll just hope on that.
So, we've made, we've made some headway in that area.
We're not there yet.
And I think it's just, it's worth, it's worth communicating that so it doesn't sound like the story's one-sided. There's seven educational plans going on simultaneously. There has been. Are those seven plans all, are they all on the website? I'm not exactly sure-
Probably not.
Of all seven are.
They include Race to the Top, they include the Focus Schools Plan, they include the Ohio Improvement Plan. There were a couple of board plans, one of which was the one you've had in your hand, and there's a board plan in 2011. So, there was a number of plans. What we're trying to do, and what we worked on at the administration retreat back in June, was try to fold those into the Ohio Improvement Plan, rather than having seven plans going at the same time, which is excessive.
So, we're looking forward to Mr. Anthony Smith. He has been working on a plot, on a strategy and a plan as well, incorporating all of these kind of into, what we want to call it one, but merging everything that we're required to do, either state, federal, merge it all together, so it's one plan instead of seven plans. Instead of there being seven owners, there's one owner or two owners. And the board will be 100% behind that. That's work that we've actually encouraged. Under, under Jim Smith, he was able to identify the plans, bring it together in a, in a visual, in a visual way. And I think you and I even had a discussion about that. I'll, we could probably make that available to you so you could see all the plans. And then we're working on merging those, so just don't want it to sound like, gee, there's nothing happening in that area. I think the public will be delightfully surprised when the final test results come out.
And I think to Dr. Weers' point, I think we still have an opportunity to broadly broadcast and communicate-
Yeah.
-all of the efforts that are going on and as well as the end results.
Look forward to coming back to that and engaging in real conversation, but letting our new superintendent do it.
Thank you.
Let's see. Anthony Schuler is our next speaker.
Evening, everybody. My name's Anthony Schuler, live in Green Hills, a taxpaying citizen. Back in June, received a letter from the Wittenwoods District, from the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning with, on the requirements to, about the homeschooling issues and, and to, oh, what's that word again? What's that word I'm looking for? But a, to, you know, for the, for all the stuff that you submit to, to allow your child to be, to be released from the district. And there's a lot of discrepancies about it over previous years. All of a sudden, this year, there's a lot of demands on it that's over and beyond state law, and I'm sure things have got sent in the past couple of weeks, and I'm hoping that everybody has, has gotten those letters and maybe get, get that under control and maybe send out, resubmit letters to all the families that are homeschooling, as, you know, to ease the pressures and, you know, with that, with that. And, and on reading with the Wittenwoods School District beliefs, information about homeschooling students seeking part-time enrollment, "The board believes public school programs should be available to our residents of the community if they choose to participate." Under the service section on the website, "The Wittenwoods City School District is dedicated to the idea that every student has a right to an education that provides opportunities for the maximum development of his or her potential through participation in a world-class education. The district encourages foster supports educational efforts for its gifted and talented participation through a continuum of services." And, and as with one of the services, with the extracurricular activities. I understand there's been some changes going on and, and under the policy that was adopted by you all back in 2008 with the two part-time course minimum. I understand that back June 30th, Ohio revised, amended the, well, included the budget on, on sports participation. And I was just kind of curious if, if, if Wittenwoods would be, would read over that and then render all their decisions that, that mandated the two course and go along with state mandates without any participation and find out, you know, it's kind of curious to see how, you know, the policies would, would work to maybe include, you know, the taxpaying families to have their kids involved in sports. You know, it'd be kind of interesting to see, you know, that, I like to get, see my kids more, as, you know, a lot of people put, socialize, you know, they're socialized, you know, as it is, but, but get them involved in the, maybe get them more involved in some other sports that they couldn't get with the city, so. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Board, any comments?
Well, I think part of Tony's question is, will we comply with the new state law? It's not an option.
Yes, I just see, you know, how is that going to, you know, how you guys get, get from a policy?
Well, with, with every law that's enacted, there are implementation details-
Right.
-that we probably haven't seen. And there's usually some delay, non-identity delay before things like that kick in anyway. So, yes, I was, I was watching that legislation very closely, and it appears to me, as a novice to the law, that it opens the door wider than we opened it back in 2008.
Board, any other comments? You're kind of asking your questions, it's very timely. One, the law was just enacted, and all the, all of the unintended consequences of the law on how do we, for example, how do we look at assessments for eligibility? Gee, the law didn't address that. So, not only do we as a school board have to look at that, and the administration has to look at it, the Ohio Athletic, the Ohio Athletic Association has to look at it and kind of give us guidelines of, what do we use for those tools? Because they, they don't exist, so it's a pretty, it's pretty complicated, but it's very timely.
I believe it talked about it, you know, assessments in, in the policy, in the 3319 section, about how to be assessed and the end of participation the year prior, or so on and so forth.
I have a similar question, and one of the first things that occurred to me, and I don't yet, we don't have the answer to it, is in, in the school, in order to participate in extracurricular activities, including sports, the teachers have to submit rosters of students who are academically eligible before they can play in the next game or participate. I would anticipate that the teacher of record, which is you, or you, or you, would have to then verify that your son or daughter meets the academic criteria to be in the sport that particular term.
Do students have to do, like drug tests too occasionally, things like that? And I understand paying our courses and fees as well, you know.
We're in much more detail than I think we've, we've received.
Right, I understand, I'm just looking forward to see how the policy will be, will work out.
We'll have to revisit that.
Well, our district council is in the room, and she's heard that. Our superintendent will take it from that, from that point. And then will the information be transferred to Anthony? Yes. Yes. Thank you. Alicia Elam? Did I say that right? Is it Elam? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to speak with us. My problem is in regards to homeschooling as well. Again, my name is Alicia Elam. I'm president of the Southern Ohio Homeschool Organization. I am also a resident here in Forest Park. Upon sending in my notification, I received a letter back stating that I was not in compliance. What I sent in was actually in more detail than required by state law. And upon speaking with the, the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, she still did not agree with me. Unfortunately, at that time, I had to get an attorney involved, and that has now been resolved. My next issue actually is in regards to the bylaws that are found on the Wittenwoods School Board website. And what was sent out from the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning do not match. On a letter dated for June 2013, "The request for 2013-2014 school year must be accompanied by an assessment of the 2012-2013 school year. This assessment needs to either be standardized test results or a detailed written narrative of the student's achievement levels completed by a teacher who holds an Ohio Teaching Certificate." In accordance with the school board website, it does not state a detailed written narrative. As a matter of fact, it only says, "The assessment should include a written narrative indicating a portfolio of work done by the child has been reviewed, and that the child's academic progress for the year is in accordance with the child's abilities." Looking further into the law, based on what Ms. Sokol sent, the procedure for educating a child at home, Form 9270, there's been some wording left off from what she sent out and what was found on the school board website. And I have those to show if you would like. In this, it states in the letter that was sent out to families, "You must submit to the superintendent at the end of each school year upon completion of any course of study taught at home. The assessment used and the performance results of your child that confirms she or he has mastered the content of the course, the assessment should include a portfolio of work, examples of test and test scores, resources and books used in course, standardized test scores demonstrating the student's ability, course of study completed, and the number of hours devoted to each study." That was what was sent to all of the homeschool families residing in the Wittenwood School District. However, based on Form 9270, again, under the assessment, it states, "If you elect to home education your child for another school year, upon providing subsequent written notification, you must provide the superintendent with the annual academic assessment report including information related to the assessment used and the performance results of your child that confirms she or he has mastered the content of the course. The assessment should include a written narrative indicating that a portfolio of work done by the child has been reviewed, and that the child's academic progress for the year is in accordance with the child's abilities, examples of tests and test scores, resources and books used in the course, standardized test scores demonstrating the student's ability, course of study completed, the number of hours devoted to each study of course, and an alternative academic assessment by the child's proficiency mutually agreed upon by the parent and the superintendent." As you can see, they differ, so I'm curious as to how this went to this, and not have the actual paperwork sent out to the parents that was on the school board website. Also-
Can you, and I'm sorry, could you just put this in context in simple words? What do you, what is the video?
We want to know why the bylaws from Wittenwoods is more strategic, I guess, than what is required by the state of Ohio.
Fair question.
That's why I brought all, the paperwork with me. I mean, the state of Ohio, I mean, it only states that you have to submit nationally-normed standardized achievement test results. They have to be done by a licensed teacher or a person, you know, that's qualified to do the test, or a written narrative by a teacher. Those are the only requirements. It doesn't state that it has to be detailed. It doesn't say that we have to send in the number of hours. We're curious as to why, all of a sudden, these are now being asked when it doesn't state so, and Section 3301-34-04, the academic assessment of the Ohio ordinance.
Did you get a response from Teaching and Learning or from our legal department?
No.
Okay.
I have not yet. But an attorney has also sent to Ms. Sokol a letter.
Yeah, I've seen that letter too.
Yeah. So, we're just, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's on, in compliance and, you know, understood and respected, you know? It's our right to homeschool our children, and, you know, we're in compliance with state law. We just would like to stay in a good relationship within, within the district.
Well, we'd like that too. I mean, I would, I would, it sounds like there's some things that don't, don't mesh throughout. You brought those to our attention. Mr. Smith, we, I'll pass this off to you so you know who to get back a hold of.
Well, while we, we've got the, the payment address, let's, we're very concerned with if we can get a response to that.
Yes. If there's a realignment of policy that needs to take place, let Mr. Smith know, and then the board can kind of discuss realignment of policy so it does all align. Any other comments, board? At this time, we'll do a two-minute recess, and then we'll move into approval of minutes. All right, thank you for the recess, board. Mr. Smith, approval of minutes. Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Have the minutes, want the minutes?
Yes, I recommend that you look over the minutes and submit them for review.
Board, what's your pleasure? Yes.
Hi, I move that we, no, I can't, I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the minutes from June 24th as so noted.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you.
Mrs. Emmert?
Obstained.
Mr. Pennekoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Seymour, treasurer's report.
Basically, for the month of June, we basically ended the year, I think I'll just go over the end of the year rather than just the month, but we ended the year to date revenues at 42.7 million, of which 3.5 was collected in June. Our total revenues for the year were 42.7, with our total expenditures coming in at 32, 39.2 million. Our expenditures were down 1.1 million from last year, and they were down 2.5 million from two years ago. So, it's a combination of the reductions that have been made over the last two years, all severances and unemployment being paid out, and we're starting to realize the results of our reductions that were made. Also, on the expenditure side, the district made, and all the administration pulled together, and we're able to reach the 5.3 savings on the appropriations. So, basically, we increased our cash balance this year, and which will help you stretch the levies requested. One of the one things I would like to go over is that revenues were also over budget, not just expenditures down. Revenues were over by about 1.1 million. 320,000 of that was real estate taxes, which is pretty close when you take a look at 27, out of 27 million. Better to come in a little over than a little under. Our foundation was up 250,000. Most of that was because our ADM was up by 22 students from the prior year. And as you know, under that bridge formula, the state had a pot of money, and every month we would get our payment. It would say where we were at with the total state ADM, and then we would have a negative. So, it went anywhere from $200 per pupil, $149 per pupil, and it would subtract it off so that the state didn't go over the budgeted amount for the state of Ohio. Well, we started out the year, when we started the year, it was around $201. We ended the year exactly at 100, so we picked up some money by the total state ADM going down and the distribution out to all, all districts. And also, something else I wanted to make you aware of is that your open enrollment was up $300,000. Open enrollment last year was 720,000. And on a funding enrollment, not necessarily how many open enrolled students were here in the seats, but the state funds you on when they come in and go out, you had 123 students under open enrollment that you were funded for last year. So, open enrollment yielded you 1.5 mils. So, we want to be cautious of how we proceed from here on out with our open enrollment plans and policies, because now we're looking at mileage. And I believe you started this just before I came, so I think you only have two years of open enrollment, if I'm not correct.
It's been a successful strategy, it really has.
So, I just wanted to share those items on the end of the fiscal year with you for the financial report.
Thank you.
And by the way, the general fund ended with $10.2 million.
That's great.
On the investments, basically, I think I'll just share that for the year, we earned There were no new CDs purchased during the month of June.
We need a vote on this.
On the investment, yes.
Yes, board. Let's take care of number four. With no objections, the financial statements from June 2013 are referred to audit, and then we need a recommendation for number five.
I move to approve the treasurer's report of investments as presented.
Second.
Mr. Seymour?
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, reports. Not a lot happening here in July, but we do have upcoming school events, obviously, with the school year kicking off in, in August, and each of the buildings have submitted August events for the board to, for the board's information, so we have that. We've also got some information regarding enrollment, enrollment report that was put together by our EMIS coordinator, and so Vernie did a nice work on that. Did draw a question, but I will give it, Vernie on that, get a response back to Mr. Pennekoff on that. And that would conclude the reports, moving on to recommendations. First recommendation is to, is a resolution for retire-rehire for Rebecca Smith. Rebecca's recently retired, and she would like to come back, but to work for the district, it is substantial savings. Should note, and goes right along with Mr. Seymour's report in regards to the savings we've accrued over the years. So, we'd recommend that we go ahead and do this, and, I don't know, I think, Courtney, what was the savings on Rebecca Smith, bringing her back?
It was over $35,000.
Some substantial savings, and we really had the same person in place we've had in the past. She's, she deals with our homeschool kids, no, our home instruction, home instruction. So, recommend that we-
Slightly different term.
Yeah, it's different, as you guys know. So, I'd recommend that we go ahead with that this evening.
Mr. President, I move to approve the retire-rehire resolution as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to personnel schedules, we have four attachments on board docs, resignation supplemental, certificated employment recommendations, as well as leaves, and so would recommend that list to you. It's a pretty substantial list. We've had pretty good turnover this summer. I can tell you that that is a trend in the business right now, probably as a run-up to the changes in the retirement- to the changes in the retirement system, it'll be fully impacted in two thousand and fifteen, but we are seeing a substantial movement of personnel at this particular point. So I'd recommend the attachments to you at this point.
I move that we approve schedules A, B, C, D, and E as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Seymour?
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolution for declaring transportation to be impractical, this concerns students attending Cincinnati Christian. I think we only have three, and so sending a school bus with three students on it's pretty impractical, based on size of the bus, fuel, it's being wasted. This is an opportunity really just to arrange something with the parents in regards to financial support for transportation as a substitute for sending that, that bus, so I would recommend the board that we go ahead and adopt this resolution.
This is the first time I've seen student names in, on the, on the resolution. Is that different?
Yeah, it's what.
Is that?
This is Courtney Sandyworth.
Okay, okay, I didn't know whether that was a new requirement that we had to.
I think we're being specific as to who it impacted.
Let's get a motion, and I have a question, let's get the motion. I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Now, my question, appropriate parliamentary order here, I'm used to seeing a long list of a variety of schools, and I thought we had to renew that, or maybe we just did renew it every school year. Is this one addition to the long list? Okay.
Is there going to be a follow-up?
Yeah, during the normal timeframe, and we don't usually submit that list to the board.
This school will then appear with the other twenty or so in that list.
The concern was the timing with which we're making this recommendation, request.
Yeah, the school starts here in a few weeks, yeah, okay.
And just for clarification, or my education, the first point, with reference to the time and distance required, what's our, our, our framework here? Where, where are the boundaries?
We're required to transport, if it's within thirty minutes, as defined by when the bus goes there in the morning, for example. We do test runs from, from the high school over to Cincinnati Christian, for example. And we do that exactly the same time for, with the bus with no one to go, to see if it, how much time it takes to go over there. Now, it's within the thirty minutes, we have a legal requirement, just impractical based on number of students who we would transport.
And if I understand you correctly, so outside the thirty minutes?
Outside thirty minutes, it's not an obligation to transport, so. So you wouldn't see in lieu of resolution for students or for schools that are beyond that?
So in this particular case, these students are within the thirty-minute range.
They are.
But it's just impractical.
Got it.
So this, this resolution means that we're going to reimburse the parents rather than send a big yellow school bus?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Or help arrange alternatives, so.
Any other discussion? Mr. Seymour?
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to policies, we had a first read on an updated third grade reading guarantee policy, which is required by, I believe, to be adopted by the board by the end of this month. There was a change in the law, I think it was Senate Bill twenty-one, I believe is the name of that. Anyway, you now have this up for action, and this was, again, we did a first read last month, we did two first reads, one in May and one in June.
Yeah, this is kind of the third read with an addition.
Yeah.
Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the new board policy as stated.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
You're just checking to see if we're alert.
I didn't call you Mr. Emmert.
Finally, we have revised policy, that we did a first read on the students' personnel communication devices, proposed policy, first read last month with a recommendation this evening, so would like to recommend that we go ahead and adopt that.
I move that we approve the revised policy five-one-three-six, student person, personnel communication device as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just interesting to note how we have had to change our policy based upon real-world activity and behaviors just within ten years.
Every time we do this and I read this out, I'm always, in the back of my head, I'm always thinking, what are the unintended consequence? And you, you just have no clue until you take the step and you do it, and then you find out, that was not quite what we thought it was.
But this proposed policy that we're going to vote on here in a minute feels much more practical than our initial attempts to say, no way, keep them out of the buildings, that was just not realistic.
Did we have, I'm sorry, did we?
Yes.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? Okay, Mr. Seymour?
Mrs. Emmert?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that completes my recommendations.
Board of Education reports, Mr. Penneka?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, just two brief items tonight from the legislative arena. First, I'd like to briefly touch on an item from the federal legislation era, area, I don't report on that very often, but NSBA has been lobbying on our behalf to permit local boards to continue to have the authority and the flexibility to operate that they have traditionally had. And in the last five or six years, there has, there has been encroachment from particularly the Department of Education of constraints on local school districts, sort of changing, beginning to erode the definition of local control, which is partially a myth anyway, but there have been some significant inroads into that, to the point that our colleagues, other boards and other board associations around the country became very alarmed at it. And so NSBA actually wrote a bill called the Local School Board Governance and Flexibility Act, that was introduced as House Resolution thirteen eighty-six. And that bill would retain and put in local flexibility in what is anticipated to be a major rewrite of the Elementary Secondary Education Act, ESEA, the overarching bill that has IDEA rules and lots and lots of federal rules that these people could speak to better than I. The good news is, that bill that our board colleagues wrote has found a warm reception among other members of the House, and so it has been attached, our, what you might call, our bill has been attached to a bill that has a good chance of surviving the arduous path through the legislation, so the first step was positive. That's the end of the federal legislation update. And just briefly, I wanted to tell you, there continues to be emerging analysis of House Bill fifty-nine that Tony referred to a minute ago, as regards other features, as financial analysts begin to look at the, the story behind the PR. A man named Howard Fleeter, which is probably the most recognized financial expert in the state of Ohio, wrote a major editorial that appeared in Saturday's Columbus Dispatch. And part of the point of that is that while the politicians are bragging about putting more money into public education, when you look at the total picture of what they're really doing, what House Bill fifty-nine does over a long period of time, including what charter school takes out, his conclusion is that in, in the school year that's going to start next week, or next month, school districts will have about a half a billion dollars less than they had, or than we had in fiscal two thousand and nine. I brought a copy of the editorial to make copies, but the copying machine is all bundled up, looks like it's being ready to, anyway, it's not working. So I will make copies later. It's an excellent editorial, you'll enjoy, no, you'll be frustrated at reading it, you'll enjoy its competency, but you'll be frustrated reading it. So, Mr. President, that concludes my report, I would respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I skipped right over. Mrs. Emmert?
Thank you, I attended the Great Oaks Board meeting, held in July, a couple notes of interest, the placement data for the class of two thousand and twelve, the high school graduating class, ninety-two percent of them are employed, in the military, or continuing their education, and forty-five percent of those are enrolled in post-secondary studies. And among completers that did two thousand and twelve adult program, ninety-one percent of them are employed or continuing their studies. ODE will be releasing the first report card for career technical education, they'll, they'll get letter grades, but it won't look like our report card, they'll be tested, graded on other areas. They, Great Oaks anticipates receiving an A in placement and graduation, four-year graduation, and a B in the five-year graduation rate, those are the three categories they've got nailed down so far. And they had thirteen students that earned individual or team awards in national competition, thank you, Mr. Cleary, for sending that, I sent it to our board, and I sent it to Dr. White, and I just got an email, she sent it to the Great Oaks Board, so a lot of people are seeing that, it was very nice video.
It was.
Lot bigger than I would have thought. Can I conclude my report?
Board, any questions or comments? Mrs. Emmert, I want to say that, one, thank you for serving on that board, my individual company is recipient of some of those students, we have three students that are, will be seniors this year that are working for us, and we've been doing this for years, they produce a great product, they produce students that local employers absolutely want to hire.
And that's the part, the business?
It is, it's pretty spectacular, and, and the students that we seem to get are the ones that participate in Skills USA, which is a national competition for tradespeople, and they do excellent. I mean, these are probably young men and women that are in the ninety-eighth or ninety-ninth percentile in terms of the kind of person that you'd want to hire into your company, so it's a, it's a great service.
We had two Wittenwoods girls go, not the same year ago, to nationals, a couple years ago, and so we've had our share of competition out there, so.
Well, thank you for serving on that board.
You're quite welcome.
Mrs. Burns?
As far as the Financial Advisory Committee, we're pretty much on vacation for the month of July, and, and trying to enjoy that as much as possible. The conversation will broaden next month, I know Mr. Penneka and I have had some conversations about some extended financial implications with House Bill fifty-nine, and some of the things that other people want to hear beyond just the levy information, and so we're going to broaden that conversation in that audience, so that'll be next month.
Great, thank you. Let's see, committee reports, you've given yours, Mr. Cleary, I'll give the communication, community engagement report. We're still one month out, we kind of keep saying we're one month out, but we've met with Anthony Smith on the data, so now we know how to put the report together in a manner that will be functional and that he'll be able to use, so we'll have a recommendation, you'll be seeing that shortly. Part of that communication audit and plan was the community engagement portion of what Mr. Anthony Smith will be doing, and he started that last week, he went and participated in the Green Hills Concert on the Green, and was introduced to the community and had an opportunity to meet some of our community, it was a successful event, he's been doing the same thing in other, the other three communities, but I can't give you an update on what has been done. As part of my, as part of my report, and I probably should have said this right when we started after roll call, Mr. Anthony Smith is out this week, he was out two weeks ago, he's had eight days on the job so far, it's been an extremely busy eight days on the job, he's out networking this week in the West with some potential business partners that we are trying to recruit to our school district, so we're really excited about that opportunity. This probably would be a great time, under communications, to thank Mr. Smith, and we'll do that appropriately at another time as well, but for filling in again this evening and taking that role on, so thank you so much for doing that.
Not a problem, don't worry.
Comments from members of the Board of Education, Superintendent?
Mr. President, I just have one, I had the opportunity to attend a United Way Impact Spotlight Luncheon about two weeks ago with the, the topic being the CPS Community Learning Centers, and so some additional information was gathered, Mary Ronan spoke at great length, as well as Julie Doppler from the Community Learning Center Coordination Area, and it's pretty impressive what they've done, and one of the, I think, takeaways in that area is that no two learning centers are alike, really going into depth into what each community needed and what each school needed, and not a cookie cutter approach. But one of the other, on the flip side, the other takeaway was that there was no additional OSFC money for some of their spacing, so that was to be taken into consideration too when they were designing some of their buildings. So it was good information to bring back and possibly implement, or at least consider as we move forward.
Great, thank you for doing that. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. President, I want to add my thank you to this Mr. Smith. This may be the last meeting in which you'll sit in this chair, and the other Mr. Smith will be here, but you came to us and stepped into a situation that begged for some continuity and some stability, professionalism, and you have delivered, you have more than delivered, you haven't treated this job as if you were the interim, you treated this and, and people and the staff and the people in the community as if you're here for the long term. So you, you've been very professional, and personally, I want to thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure working with you, and looking forward to working with you as you move into other roles, working with high schools in the area.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure working with the staff, and with the board, and with the community. This is a very special district, and it, it has such potential, as I've set over in Oregon. I think this district will reach its potential, and I think will, I look forward to coming back a number of years from now and seeing where it is, but I have had conversations with the new superintendent, feel confident that he's on, he's the right guy for the job, and so we look forward in the future, but thank you, Board, appreciate it very much, thanks.
Thank you for being here. Any other comments on the board?
I just wanted to mention, in case you went by the high school a couple weeks ago on the weekend, and it was packed, there was tents everywhere, there was cars everywhere, and they were holding a regional track and field, and those winners would go to national in Michigan to compete for the AAU. And what a great honor for Forest Park and for Wittenwoods to be able to honor that, as many people was there, the economic development and the, and the economic boom for the hotels and the restaurants and everything, I went by and I said, what is going on here? And so we talked, stopped and talked to gentlemen, and he said, other from all over Indiana, Kentucky, and Ohio, and so what a compliment, that our stadium is such a high grade that can hold and host an event like that, so I just love.
That was an absolutely huge event.
It was.
It was.
Hopefully it went off all right, I didn't hear anything, you know?
It went fine.
I'm good.
Any other comments from the board? I have actually three. One is, Board, we've kind of hit something on the back burner, and we've had Mr. Smith, Jim Smith, working on this, and our athletic director, but that's getting back into an athletic league, and it's time that we focus on that, maybe it'll, we put some time and some focus on that, with the new superintendent and the relationships he has, it's time to tap that. It's time to tap that. Mr. Anthony Smith and I have had that discussion, so I just kind of wanted to put that back on our radar again, and hopefully, in maybe the next month or two months or three months, maybe he can look, reach out to some of his current relationships and see if there's an opportunity out there to get our students some better exposure than what they're currently getting. That was one. And the second item, it's actually kind of part of the Athletic League item, and that is, we've had some discussions in the past about our transportation services and the cost of our transportation services, and not being in a league has had a detrimental impact on us, and that it's a lot more expensive. In the event, maybe that we don't get in a league, I have kind of an appetite to look at that again, to look at, is there an opportunity to outsource transportation, and is there a substantive savings for doing that? I've also had that discussion with Mr. Anthony Smith, and that's something that he would support looking back into again, so I just wanted to kind of let the board know that that's an area we need to look at again. The last item is a board retreat, and we have two tentative dates. I don't know if these work for you, September the 13th and 14th, or September the 20th and 21st. And the agenda's not set for that board meeting, but that will be a joint meeting with the new superintendent and the board.
I'm sorry, what were the two September dates?
September 13, 14, and 2021.
I'm not, I'm out of town for both of those.
Well, what do we do now?
You want to buy my non-refundable tickets?
No. What I'll do is, I'll get with, these were dates where Anthony knew that he was in town. Are there some dates that look good, and I'll work at the other direction?
Towards October or towards August, which way are you looking?
Probably later in September, but the sooner the better.
The 27th and 28th, I should be okay.
I'm fine.
That works for me.
I am out for three weeks, starting September the 18th, and returning on October the 7th.
Well, how about if we do this? Continue looking at your schedule, and we will firm up the date at our work session.
About August 30th and 31st, anybody? Is that too soon?
It wouldn't be, I don't think it would be for me.
I could do that weekend.
Why don't we make that a tentative, and we'll...
See what Mr. Smith has to say.
See how that works at the work session, but we'll make that a tentative, and I'll let...
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas, no.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I was going to say another Mr. Smith.
So, we're on schedule for work session on the 12th. We're still...
Yes.
And you just said, hold the weekend of August 30, 31 for the retreat.
Yes.
I can do. Yeah, I like the idea of sooner rather than later also.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Smith?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Comments from the board, or to the board from the Association? Seeing no one present, there's no need for an executive session? We're adjourned.
Who could be down?
You have to have every single meeting from now on.
I'm sorry.
You can sign my petition. Allee, Allee.
Yes.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How long are you waiting? We can sign my petition.
Oh, okay.
It's up to you.
I just want you to sit back.
Okay.